I call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. All 12 are present and voting.
Thank you, Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, leading us in the invocation, we have Reverend Bridget Flad Daniels from Union Congregational Church joining us this evening. Bridget received her Master of Divinity from Catholic Theological Union in Chicago in 1998 and completed further requirements for ordination through Chicago Theological Seminary in 2005. She was ordained by the UCC in 2007. A native of the Milwaukee area, Bridget served various churches in the metro area. Bridget cites a missionary experience in El Salvador at the end of the country's civil war as a watershed event in her ministry. After returning to the United States, she served as a chaplain at a homeless shelter, which focused particularly on hospitality to those dying with AIDS and as a campus minister as she prepared for ordination. Along with this active work for peace and justice, Bridget has extensive experience in Christian education, worship leadership, and preaching. And I believe she's been at Union Congregational Church for about the last six years. I thought it was fitting to have Bridget with us this evening because of her role as pastor at Union Congregational Church, a church which served as a stop on the Underground Railroad, helped just several years ago form the Ecumenical Partnership for Housing, and has been an open and affirming congregation, open and affirming of people of LGBTQ identity and orientation for several years, and has been really a leading congregation in that effort. And with it being Pride Month, I thought it was very appropriate for Pastor Flad Daniels to lead us in the invocation this evening. So with that, I would ask the pastor to unmute herself and provide us with that invocation.
Thank you so much for the invocation. And thank you all for having me with you tonight. The invocation that I'd like to share is a thank you to various people who have the LGBT experience. Thank you to the queer ancestors who blazed this path before us. Thank you to every kid who is the first in their class or their school, town, or their family, and who made it a little easier for the next one. Thank you to the elders who fought for yourselves and for us. Thank you to the ones who let your freak flag fly. Thank you to the ones who do in your own way. Thank you to the ones who take each other in. Thank you for kissing in public and holding hands in the street. Thank you to the ones who share their scars. Thank you to the ones who hold space. No pressure. Thank you loud ones. Thank you quiet ones. Thank you to the ones who helped us learn to love our desire. No more shame. Thank you to the ones who help us love our bodies, be they soft or hard, trans or cis. Thank you to the ones who are doing what you need to do to survive. We need you. Thank you for persisting. Thank you for proclaiming. Thank you for being. To you who have shouldered the losses and taken the bullets and been betrayed, beaten, bullied, or isolated, may we honor your pain. Your contribution is not forgotten. You deserved so much better. May we do better. But thank you. Once upon a time, they could say that they didn't know us, but not anymore. Here we are, bringing our sacred strange into their pews and pulpits and dinner tables, standing beside them in waiting rooms and checkout lines. Do not apologize. They are lucky to have us here. Thank you to every queer beloved and trans love who keeps choosing to live and choosing to love and choosing to support one another. And thank you to you who are yet to come, who will expand our understanding and help us love more deeply. As we step into Pride Month, may the work of these servants of our city be rededicated to the wholeness, to the safety, to the thriving of all your people. Receive our prayers and bless them in their work. Amen.
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 Thank you so much, Pastor Flad Daniels.
Thank you, and I apologize that I have to leave.
No, no problem at all. Thanks so much for all the work you do for our community. Really appreciate it.
It's enough.
All right, on to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. Any changes here? Seeing no requests, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda has been approved. Report by the mayor. First and foremost, 10 out of 12 of us are in the same room for the first time in a very long time. So just wanted the public to be aware of that. We might have some technological issues that we're working through, so please bear with us. Also, just wanted to recognize everyone who organized or participated in a Memorial Day event yesterday. I was fortunate to attend a couple, one at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park and one at Admiral Flatley. And just very grateful, of course, to those who lost their lives in defense of our country, but also to their friends and family who keep their memories alive and were instrumental in bringing some of those events together yesterday. Also, wanted to let everyone know, I think many of us already do, but just wanted to make the point that our farmers markets are all back. Am I still on here? Everybody still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. You know, we obviously had the Saturday morning farmers market, had the Wednesday night farmers market. We've had the Military Avenue, I think, for several weeks now. So just wanted to make that point for the public, encourage everyone to get back and enjoy some fruits and vegetables and company with friends and neighbors. I was able to be at the Saturday morning farmers market and plan to attend many of them and others throughout the rest of the summer. Finally, Kids' Day will be later this month, maybe not as grand as it's been in years past because of some of the, you know, social distancing that still has to occur with the smallest members of our community. And we'll have some more details to follow on that, but just wanted to put that out there. There've been a lot of questions coming in to City Hall asking about whether the Kids' Day was going to be continuing this year, and we want to assure everyone that it is. So looking forward to that on June 25th. A great celebration in this community that was started by our former mayor and I think is still something that many folks look forward to. So wanted to make sure that people knew about that. So with that, I will move along to announcements. Any announcements? I'm not in there yet. Yeah, go ahead, Alder Scannell.
Plastic bags. Yes, sir. We want them. Three bags full. We're collecting plastic bags, City Hall and at the Wildlife Sanctuary and at Bay Beach and maybe some other places, perhaps, we can work out with the city to collect plastic bags for recycling purposes, to find out which bags are... Do we have that on our website? Where? I was looking for it before and couldn't... We don't?
Parks Department, I think, is the one that's coordinating.
Parks Department. Okay, that should be at the Parks Department. Just go to the park, City website, go to Parks Department. We'll have that up. There's all different kinds of plastic bags, more than you would think, that are recyclable, Ziploc bags, all different kinds. And let's get this going, and hopefully it'll continue and grow, and we'll continue to recycle plastic bags in Green Bay.
And what happens if we recycle a bunch of plastic bags?
If we recycle five tons, which sounds like a lot, but it's really not. I mean, we can meet that like not. And we will get a bench. The company will make, that collects these bags, makes benches, and they will donate a bench to the city. So, and once we get our first bench, we meet your first benchmark. We can go for a second benchmark and a third benchmark, and we can just fill up the whole city with benches.
Heck, yeah. Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Yes, Alder LaFave.
For Alder Scannell, do you know when that is starting?
We started.
Started. Okay, good. Thank you.
I think it started today.
I got bags.
Very good. Any other announcements? All right, on to appointments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the new appointments made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any questions here? All right, seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Those new appointments are approved. Reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any comments here? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and that reappointment has been confirmed. On to report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion?
Alder Vanderleest. Could you just give us a briefing on that loan agreement?
Yes, we will go to Director Steck Schulte for some background there.
Thank you, Mayor. And just quickly summarize the... I apologize for sending the number of documents I included in your packet this time, but I felt it was important to give the full background of how we got to where we are here today. Essentially, this is what the city made back in 2005 related to the city center Bay Lake Building. Financing originally was done as a direct $2.5 million loan that the city had actually taken on and contributed to the project. Later on, that was actually refinanced by the developer, who then exchanged, in exchange for the facility, the city not directly financing it, the private financing replaced it, but it still required a guarantee by the city. That was done, I believe, back in 2005 originally, the last time the agreement on the guarantee came up, 2015. Essentially, this is, the reason why it's back for you today is there's been a change in some of the financing terms for the private financing. It does not change the city's commitment, however, that was originally made on the guarantee. It is simply a requirement that we acknowledge, essentially, that the financing terms for the private financing have changed, but it still includes the city's guarantee on this financing. So it is an amount of about $2.5 million. Let me see if I can actually find the information in the document here. This is primarily related back to the APAC customer service project that ended up moving into the second floor of that building, but then did not end up staying there. So this was a leftover remnant project related to the top half of those units in that building. Just to clarify, there is not one owner to that building. It is a condo building. There's probably about a dozen owners to that specific building. This is related to just the units kind of up on the second floor that are currently controlled by HCWLCLC. So there was an MOU that was done along with the initiative team. We have reached out to the developer and asked you. While it's certainly not required, it does not change the city's guarantee at this point obligation, but we are currently pursuing an updated memorandum of understanding with the developer that we would like to bring forward and back to this body for consideration by August 1st.
Thanks, Director Alder Vanderleest. Any questions or thoughts?
Are they current on all the payments that have become due?
Essentially, for their private financing, the reason they are refinancing Alder Vanderleest is because they have, they are actually, they are changing their terms a little bit to actually have, involve some interest-only payments and then restarting those payments here going forward in 2021. And I believe those actually have been outlined in the staff memo that was provided to you. So they have been missing payments, but that's why the bank is working with them, essentially to reschedule the financing going forward to continue the payments on that financing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. We had a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been adopted. On to INS.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin to approve the report of the Improvement in Services Committee for May 26, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number four.
Any others? Item four will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved, the exception of item four.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, item four, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. The item was pulled by Alder Weary. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At committee last week, we discussed, or we were going to discuss the potential of increasing the roadwork we do each year. And what was going to be presented to us was a report, and I think it was maybe going to be a verbal report, and we asked that it be forwarded to the council, and I don't think anybody received it yet, and I've asked several times. So I'm wondering if Director Gurnier can assure us that that can be received perhaps tomorrow.
Director Gurnier?
As you alluded to, Alder, I mean, there is no report as such yet. So it's, we've got some notes that we could definitely share with you, but there is no report. Last week, on Friday, I had a meeting with Director Quirk at the Green Bay Water Utility, and during that meeting, Director Quirk asked if we would be interested in sitting down to prepare a formal report for the June INS meeting, the one that's anticipated to be in the third or fourth week, the late meeting. And I indicated to her that I think it would be a good idea for us to sit down and formalize a report so that we do have something in writing to go back to that we can share with the committee. But as of yet, there is not a report, per se.
All right, I appreciate it, Director. I think the committee was perhaps under the understanding that there was a report that was going to be given to us last week. That report would be helpful when looking at the five-year plan. I believe the projected amount for the next five years for repaving is set flat, I think $2.7 million. Is that about correct?
Director?
I believe that to be the case.
Okay. So yeah, if you definitely could sit down with the water department, that's going to be critical for the, at least the reconstructs. It shouldn't affect at all the amount of resurfacing we do. If we can determine which ones don't need reconstruction, we can plow ahead perhaps quicker on the resurfacing. And we'll talk about the long-range plan later in the meeting, but I appreciate if you can get that to us soon as possible. Thanks, Steve.
Will do.
Thanks, Alder. Thanks, Director Gurnier. Obviously, this is the busy season for many of our departments, but in particular for DPW and Water. So appreciate the fact that they're spending some time putting this report together, but they are doing a lot of work on top of that. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Any other comments on item four? All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and that item has been approved. On to Protection Policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the report of the Protection Policy Committee for May 24, 2021. It's made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number one.
Number one. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The report is going to approve with the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. The item was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did watch the committee. I apologize if I wasn't there. I had, I was actually refereeing some high school soccer that day, so too many things going on in spring. But I had talked about it before, and I'll talk about it a little bit again here. It's really not a data-driven issue, as had been discussed at the committee. It really doesn't matter what the population will be when we get the census back. It's the idea of how do we want our city council to look organizationally or philosophically? And that, you know, do we want a dozen or do we want 24 like we used to have years ago when the districts were smaller and you could have more of a real contact and personable touch to all of your dealings in your district? They've gotten pretty big over the years, and as we grow in size, they just keep getting bigger. And I did ask staff, and hopefully they're still working on it, to look at other cities and what their population is and how many Alders they have. You know, I had started doing a little one myself. Deep Pier has eight. They only have 23,000 people. So they really get to be, you know, almost a couple-block radius. They can really help their people out more personally. Appleton has 15, Racine has 15. So I'd like to, I don't know if anything necessarily needs to be done tonight, but when it comes around again, I want us to be open to that fact that the bigger the districts get, the less you can do for your people unless you don't work or have a lot of time to put to it. And also, when it comes to elections, the more large dollars can affect it because it's hard to get to every door once, much less twice, or some of us three times. But that's very difficult to do, and the bigger they get, the more that, you throw money at it, you're going to get flyers to people. We should not have that. We should have the smaller districts, better service. And I really think an odd number would be good so that the council can have really its legislative body determining things and not need tiebreakers. No offense, Mr. Mayor, it's just about whoever the mayor is. You know, they have their portion of the government, and we really should have ours and not need tiebreakers. So when this comes back, have an open mind. I'll put together some stats on what other cities are doing. Maybe I'll bring it back before, you know, the city's ready with the numbers. But I just wanted to explain that it really had nothing to do with the population. It had to do with the philosophy of what we want in the city. So, thank you.
Got it. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on that item? Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm glad that Alder Weary brought this up. I know as far as the Alders that are on the district right now or at council right now, he is the only one that went through the 2010 election after the census was done, and quite a bit of change was done with that. And a little confusing to some folks because some districts were changed markedly, you know. So I understand in a sense that the population hasn't grown tremendously. So in effect, you could kind of keep the district somewhat the same in terms of area, but I think that we need to look at it, and I appreciate that staff is looking at it. Like I said, Racine and Appleton, other communities that are smaller than Green Bay have more Alders on their district. And we have 87 to 8800 per. That's a lot. It's a lot of people. So I appreciate him bringing that forward, and I'll be happy to work with that as well as other council members. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments? Alder Weary, for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was remiss in mentioning, I wanted to thank Clerk Jeffries for putting together a really good report, and I would encourage anybody to look at that. It really does a good job of explaining the process in the coming months and why it's going that way. Normally, we should be ahead of schedule, but things are a bit behind, and it's going to be a tight pinch at the end, but watch that, look at that report. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Alder LaFave, go ahead.
And then, too, I wonder how the county would match if we go to 15. I know, like, I know everybody's district does not match exactly your county to your Alder, if you are on the county, like John and I. So I don't know if that would make a problem or not. So we have to look at that also.
Thanks, Alder. Any other thoughts? All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and that has been received and placed on file. Report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any names here to be handled separately or abstained from? Alder Johnson.
Thank you. I just need to have the record reflect abstention on Allison Tott. She's a direct report of mine.
Very good. Thanks, Alder. Any others? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Report of the Plan Commission.
Question approved.
Motion to approve made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Park Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number four.
Yep. Alder Johnson?
Thank you. And I sent an email earlier today to Attorney Chavez, and I believe she replied and copied you as well, Mayor. But unless I'm missing it, I didn't see anything from the Parks Committee contained within our packet. Civic Clerk was also, did not have any of the supporting documentation. And my inquiry with Attorney Chavez was whether or not we were within our purview to still take up these issues without the supporting documents. I just at least wanted to verify for the balance of council that she said that the, you know, state statute doesn't necessarily get into the necessity or requirement for supporting documentation as long as the agenda item was sufficiently clear. However, I wanted to bring it up because, of course, if there is anybody on council that has questions about items and they're missing that documentation and don't feel comfortable enough to make those votes without that information, I think it's important that they raise that concern right now. So for me, there was only one item. The rest I felt comfortable on, and I believe Alder Burnett already pulled it, but I at least just wanted to maybe call as a point of order, Mayor, in case others weren't aware of that.
Yep, appreciate that. Alder Johnson, I know that Director Ditchite is on the line, but we'll go to Attorney Chavez maybe first just to see if we should hold any of these items over. Attorney Chavez?
So I looked at these items again just to determine whether or not they provided me with sufficient information to be able to determine whether or not, you know, what was going to be voted on. The only ones that I felt were even potentially questionable were one, two, and five. And as I read them, my concerns actually started going away. So for example, the easement, because it's pretty clear, like, it's generally best if we have the easement attached to extend, people know exactly what portion we're talking about and what property we're referring to. But, you know, it's pretty clear in here. It's 12-foot wide, utility easement, Beaver Dam, Creek, Greenway, just southeast of the intersection of West Point and Packer Lane. So I'm comfortable with that one moving forward. Number two, unless people are really interested in which park shelters we're going to be installed, you know, that's really something within the purview of the city, so that's also given me less hesitation. And then, number one, the constant modifications to bike skills course. I think that's the only one that could potentially require additional information, but even then, like, it's telling the public that there is a bike skills course that's supposed to be located at Triangle Hill, that it was donated, and that what would be happening tonight is some modifications to that document. So with all of those, I don't necessarily have concerns with that we didn't meet the open meetings requirement. It's more just a concern at this point of whether anybody feels like they want to hold it to give the public more opportunity for input on any of those items.
Thanks, Attorney Chavez. Appreciate that. So it looks like we don't have necessarily any open meetings concerns, but still appreciate Alder Johnson for noting that and bringing that up here. Alder's, well, Alder Burnett has mentioned he wants to pull item four. Any others? For further discussion? Okay, so item four will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item four.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Burnett. The item was pulled by Alder Burnett. You have the floor.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of this. Director Ditchite prepared a good verbal report for the committee, but I was a little uncomfortable without seeing something in writing as to the details. When we had staff, I'd like to know a little more of the financial impact, even though they're seasonal, even though the funds generated from the change will be for further improvements of the park. I did talk to Director Ditchite the day after, said to him, you know, could you prepare something for the council and for me with some of those figures in writing? He certainly did that. I forwarded it to... I forwarded it to the rest of the council, as well as me, obviously. After seeing that, I'm definitely in favor of it. I think it makes a lot of sense, so with that, I'm in approval. I just wanted that to be known. It wasn't any disrespect to Director Ditchite, it's just that when we make these sorts of decisions with financial implications, I like to have something in writing rather than a verbal report. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of questions on this particular agreement, especially after seeing Director Ditchite's report. Director Ditchite, do we know exactly how much of existing city staff time will be spent on managing, whether it's planning or hands-on operation of the gift shop?
All I can tell you at this time is the current manager that ran it worked about 20 hours per week, and that was on average. So until we actually get in there, see how much time it takes us to do it, I can't give you an exact answer, but I will tell you that, you know, the staff that we're going to use are definitely well-versed in concessions, and we feel we can do it very efficiently with the staff we have. So I don't see it taking even 20 hours per week, but I can't give you an exact time.
Okay, and, I mean, to me, 20 hours a week is actually fairly significant, given the margins that the gift shop has provided. So do we have a plan in terms of changes that we intend to make to increase the profitability? Or are we going in just kind of assuming that we can change course?
Well, first of all, we're not hiring the manager position, and that was the bulk of the expenses. So since we're doing that in-house, we'll see a significant savings right there. And then, we feel that by, you know, looking at the inventory and, you know, maybe selling different items than what we're currently selling, it'll be more profitable.
Okay, and at any point, has staff actually engaged or entertained the discussion about whether or not we should continue to have a gift shop? I mean, to me, there are typically two reasons why you might want to do something like that. I feel like the discussion up to this point is really focused on creating, obviously, additional revenue to help support the facility. And I, personally, when I look at the numbers, you know, it's kind of like, is the squeeze worth the juice? And the numbers certainly don't dictate that right now. And the other reason I think you may want to do it is, obviously, it just complements the facility, it's that experience thing that's really required. And for the Wildlife Sanctuary, I don't know that people necessarily go there for the gift shop. So I'm just curious if we've talked about whether or not it is something that we need to continue to operate.
Well, one thing that we would like to do, which I didn't talk about at the last Parks Committee, but one thing we would like to do at the nature center is to create a front counter that's staffed. And so if the city takes over the operation of the gift shop, we feel that that front counter person could also be the gift shop attendant and work dual purposes. So we've had some security issues out at the sanctuary. We feel that by having a front counter person there, it'll definitely enhance the user experience, because somebody who has a question will be able to go right up to the attendant and get an answer. So we plan on staffing it a little bit differently than what we're doing now, and by taking over the operation of the gift shop and the profits that come along with that and the expenses that are already built in, we feel we can do it a little bit differently than we've done it in the past and really enhance the user experience out there. And the safety.
Yeah, and hearing that eases my concern a little bit, because, you know, I don't think it's particularly apparent that a gift shop even exists out there. So if you don't have a reason to go into that particular building, you know, I can see where the, it's not, you know, immediately visible that that does exist. So if we're trying to double up on, you know, double duty on that, that makes a lot more sense to me, and I'm happy to hear that you're entertaining that. And that's the other thing that I would encourage us to do, is think about additional, you know, wayfinding signage or something that can help direct potential customers into that area so that we can get a little something more out of it. Just one final question that I would have. I mentioned in your report that as part of this agreement, that we would have to purchase the inventory that is currently in the gift shop from the Guild. If you could explain, do we know how much that is? And do we know, do we have a plan for moving that inventory? And, because I'm assuming that maybe it's old or out of date, and like any retail outlet, you need to turn inventory? So, and then, once we do make that payment to the Guild, what are they going to use that funding for? Is it intended to be reinvested back into the Wildlife Sanctuary?
Yeah, so we haven't completed the inventory yet. There's, that'll be a little time-consuming process, and so they wanted to make sure that the city was interested in making this switch. Now, with the inventory, so when we do pay it, we're only going to pay inventory that they have a receipt for. So if it's an item that is all...
We lost you, Director. Yeah, we're not getting your audio, Director Ditchite.
Hello?
There we go. There we go. You're back.
All right, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a computer issue. Some of you know that already from other meetings. So anyway, getting back to the inventory, so any money that we spend to purchase the inventory, the Guild will take that money and reinvest it at the sanctuary. So they, all of their money goes to offset animal care expenses. So we're going to be using funding from a donation that came in to purchase it, and then it'll just get reinvested back into the sanctuary.
Okay, and then, would you be opposed, Director Ditchite, to maybe coming back to us six months, maybe 12 months? Because I do think that, I don't know that it's in the best interest of the city, you know, to be managing a gift shop for the margins that we were looking at. And so I think it's important for us to continue to monitor that, because staff time comes at a cost. There's an opportunity cost there, and I just want to make sure that when we're investing, investing staff time to manage, whether, again, it's for strategic planning purposes or the actual management of the facility, that we're not just losing sight of that value somewhere in a budget, even though it's really a direct cost to managing the facility. So would you, would you have any objection to maybe bringing back some revised numbers in six or 12 months?
I would have no objections to that at all. Our goal here is to make it profitable. If we can't make it profitable, then we're going to find another option. So we don't want to operate the gift shop at a loss, just as a courtesy to the users.
What would be, what would be an appropriate amount of time, do you think, for you to be able to bring back data that's useful?
I would say six months after we, after the city takes it over and starts operating it. So there may be a little bit of lead time in there where it's not open right away while we're going through the inventory and figuring out a staffing plan. So I would say six months after we actually open it to the public.
Okay. Mayor, if I could just, I would make that as an amendment to the original motion, to bring back to Parks Committee in six months a report of the performance of the gift shop after city takes over management.
A motion made by Alder Johnson on an amendment on that motion, that was seconded by Alder Stevens. Further discussion? Alder Scannell.
Thank you, I just wanted to add that the proceeds do go back into the Wildlife Sanctuary. So even if we don't make a whole lot, even a little going back in is something. And I don't think, well, as we talked at Parks and the Director just mentioned, if we're operating at a loss, we got to do something different. But I think even a little over, it still might be worth doing, because a little something back into the sanctuary is better than nothing into the sanctuary. And if we're covering our costs, so I just want to keep that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Ms. Kimir?
Just one sec. Alder Burnett, and then Alder LaFave, and then Alderdorf.
Yeah, thank you. If I recall, during the committee discussion, this change was being proposed because the group was, through an audit or some sort of financial review, it was recommended by an outside party that they consider having the city take over the operation. So that kind of triggered my thinking, like, okay, that's fine, but we need to make sure it's good for the city. And according to what Director Ditchite said and his track record, I think we have a good reason to move forward, but we also have to consider the costs when you add labor and when you add, even though they're lower paid positions and seasonal. When we talk about possibly changing the job descriptions of other employees, if you do a welcome center type situation, those are future considerations that this decision will then project. And so I guess, real quick, Mayor, if I could ask Director Ditchite, when you mentioned that volunteers have run this and that potentially you're going to improve the user experience by having an additional, like, welcome center thing, which I think is a good idea, would that require a job description change? Is there a current member of your staff you're thinking to fulfill that role?
We have other similar job classifications at the Wildlife Sanctuary, but this would be either a new position, or we would use the staff that, from the gift shop, to expand their hours potentially for that position. So it would not be using existing staff, it would be either using the gift shop staff or using the gift shop volunteers, and then just changing their job duties a little bit.
Okay, I'm in favor with the amendment. I think that's a good, good idea, Alderman Johnson, so I'm still in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder LaFave, and then Alderdorf.
Yes, I have gone into the gift shop several times, and I have purchased gifts. I think they've got some really neat items there that relate to the Wildlife Sanctuary, and there's a lot of educational ones, there's a lot of little fun ones. And I found that the prices were very reasonable, and I would hope that you wouldn't go too high on your pricing, but maybe, you know, different vendors can bring things in for a little bit better pricing, I don't know. But I do enjoy the gift shop, and the gift shop is pretty, with all the windows, it's pretty apparent that there is a gift shop there, but there was a lot of, it was closed. And when the building actually was open, that was before last year, and it's staffed. So maybe that was an issue, too, that we weren't bringing in the revenue. If you don't have anybody there, you're not going to be having your sales. So I think if we staff it properly and make it, like you said, a visitor counter, you'll have more people coming in, and then they'll see something and say, oh, this is kind of cute, you know, I'll get this for this person or that person. But I did, yeah, I think they had a good variety of items there, and I found things that I thought was very interesting to give. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alderdorf.
Okay, so I'm going to speak as a mama and a grandma, and a mama who brought her daughter out to that gift shop, and as a grandma who had two grandsons that went to the 4K out there, and the delightful time that we had getting little rewards at the gift shop. And there's a lot of children out there now with the 4K program. It is something that it's, I don't, wouldn't want to see it operate at a loss. Of course I wouldn't. I don't care if it operates just at a little bit of a profit, though. It's nice for children, and maybe my husband doesn't enjoy gift shops as much as I do. That's probably a pretty accurate statement, but I love gift shops, and I know a lot of people that do love gift shops. So I'm definitely in favor of keeping the gift shop going, and I will vote in favor of your amendment as well, Alder Johnson.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I was going to ask Director Ditchite, they're talking about 20 hours a week. Is the gift shop normally open, like, from noon to four? Is that normally the hours that they're open?
Yeah, so currently, the gift shop is open noon to four every day.
Okay, seven days a week.
Yes, and on the weekdays, there's volunteers that staff the counter, and on the weekends, there's paid staff that staffs it.
Okay, I think that's one of the things that might come out as you report on this, as far as the number of volunteers, the number of paid staff, that type of thing. I think just details, I think, are good to stay transparent. So I also agree with Alder Johnson's amendment as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any further comments on the amendment? Seeing none, and just to summarize for the public, this is an amendment that would require a report to be brought back to the council six months after the transition has been made from the Guild to our city staff. So we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the amendment has been adopted. Motion to approve is adopted, has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been adopted as amended. Personnel? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. TB and P? Motion to approve the report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission from May 17, 2021, made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately?
I'm looking for one here, number four.
Number four. Any others? Item four will be handled separately. Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item four. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. The item was pulled by Alder Stoyer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask Director Gurneyr about this. I have talked to Director Hanson as well, Traffic Engineer Hanson, I should say, and it's been an interesting study on this particular intersection. There was a big push in the neighborhood to keep the four-way stop at one time. It's tempered a little bit, because I think the flashing red has worked somewhat fairly well, and I just wanted to get some clarification as far as the amount of traffic that Director Hanson sees, as well as yourself, on that particular intersection, and what the finding was as far as the legitimacy of that, keeping it as a flashing red at this time.
Director Gurneyr?
Well, the, the traffic that we're seeing there is consistent with the requirements for the signage, not, not the flashing signal. Again, the flashing signal really, in a configuration of a traffic signal that's been deactivated and put in a permanent flash, that's really not a legitimate MUTCD traffic control device. So the appropriate measure to put there is the signage and to get the signal hardware down. And the traffic volumes and the compliance, to be quite honest, that we've seen since we put the 90-day trial into, into effect, definitely supports removal of the signal and utilization of the stop signs in place of the signalization.
All right, so I was just wondering if there was much pushback from the neighbors on this, because I know that initially, there was quite a bit of push to keep the four-way stop, and I realize that they're older signals and that there's quite a bit of cost. I mean, is there any idea what a cost would be for that intersection if you did put in normal lights?
To put, to reinstall the traffic signal?
Right.
It doesn't meet warrants.
Well, I'm just saying...
There's a whole, there's a whole study that goes through that talks about the different warrants that need to be met for a traffic signal to be installed, and this intersection wasn't meeting warrants, so that's why we did the study, to look at the signs. It's more appropriate to have the signs there.
I understand that, it's just that at one time, there was, you know, traffic lights there, and I, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to get the clarification as far as you feel and your office feels that the way we're going with it will be legitimate enough to handle the traffic that is there. And there are time periods where it is a little busier than others. You have a school, a couple of schools nearby, you have a park nearby, and I just wanted to make sure that that was all vetted out and taken care of, and I'm fine with that. You know, I think for the most part, I agree with Director Hanson on that. You know, I think for the most part I agree with Director Hanson on this, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, the neighbors were listened to and it was vetted out correctly. That's all.
Absolutely. Uh, we would not have proceeded even to the 90-day trial if, if we didn't support, uh, the findings of the report.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Thanks, Director. Anything else on that item? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it and that item has been adopted. Sustainability.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, the report of the Sustainability Commission from May 19, 2021, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any items here to be handled separately?
One and three.
One and three. Will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and three. Motion to approve item one made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Dorf.
I think that it would be important for council to understand what the discussion was that we had in closed session at the finance. Not really sure how much, uh, we should discuss this outside of closed session. Um, it's really kind of other alders that would like to get outside of closed session. I would sit down.
Any discussion at this time? Alder Johnson? Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just wondering perhaps if it would be, um, prudent maybe for the finance director to give just a, a high-level overview of what's happening here, the things that, that makes sense for public consumption. And then, um, I do agree that I think closed session does make sense after that sort of fact sharing. That sounds good to me. Director Ellenbecker, a little high-level overview for us?
Hello, all. Um, yes, the KI Convention Center expansion, we call it the K, um, KI two, um, has annual, I mean, has semi-annual debt payments, June 1st and December 1st. And, um, the KI Convention Center two expansion, um, payment that is due June 1st is $732,000. And we were, it was brought to your attention by the county, um, who has to approve our payment, that they, um, did not feel that there was enough money in the room tax stabilization fund. Um, and at, um, we're, we're, so we had to decide how we were going to come up with that money, the $732,000. Um, through working, we did have many conversations with the county and as of the end of last week, we were able to come, come to a compromise that we, the city would be allowed to use a one-time $500,000 reserve fund that was set aside for the KI two in case there was ever at a time when the rest stabilization fund did not have enough money. So we have used the 700,000, uh, $500,000 that was set aside, leaving $232,000 left for the city to come up with to make our debt payment service that was due today. And, um, so there was some money that was set aside from a bond account from the KI Convention Center from back in 2013 and there was some money that was set aside, um, for, um, set aside at the time of, um, and from naming rights, um, for if, if debt service was needed for this, um, KI expansion. So we have tapped those two funds, um, to pay the remaining of the balance. And, and so at this point, there's no general levy dollars that have been used to make this payment. Um, I, the direction from the, um, finance committee meeting since we, um, we're on a very short deadline, we didn't find out until very end of April, beginning of May that we were not going to, county was not going to pay, um, allow us to use the room tax stabilization fund for the six-one payment. So, um, we were, we, we brought it to finance committee just last week and, um, the Alder, um, the, the attorney, uh, was able to allow us to, I think she's called it ratify because there were seven alders. And so at that point, there was a decision on how we should program, move forward and make the debt payment, um, for today. And so if you have more questions on what that means, I sent out some, an email this afternoon, otherwise our attorney's on the line.
Thanks, Director. All right, with that overview, I think it makes sense to go into closed session.
If I could.
Yeah, Alder Galvin, go ahead.
And this is more for the public's information. If, uh... There we go. Thank you. Um, if Director Ellenbecker could explain some of the things, um, that led up to this, uh, the waterfall account, um, and, and everything that went into how it works and how that money is, is dispersed, uh, in what order and, and the timelines that are involved for council members that weren't able to review the meeting or for those in the public that, uh, are trying to figure out why we suddenly have to come up with almost three-quarters of a million dollars by today. Thank you.
Sure. Um, back in 2017, um, the county has, had come to the city and asked for us to pool our resources to allow them to, um, use as excess room tax money to help fund the expo hall. Um, so the way the current waterfall goes is we have a room tax commission where you have several municipalities, including Ashwabonan, Aloe, Bellevue, the city of Green Bay, um, and there's a few other, um, that all pool their room tax dollars and they go into an associate, a trust at Associated Bank. Um, and the first things that are paid out of that money is, um, room tax for the KI Convention Center, the first portion, the original KI Convention Center and the RESH Center. So they, um, pay those debt service. Once that is, um, although what they call the buckets, um, they make sure that there's enough for every year's annual payments. They put that in a bucket. Once there's enough, it overflows into the next bucket. Um, there were some reserves that had to be buckets that had to be filled. Once those are filled, then it goes to the next level. The next level is our KI convention expansion, um, which we would be considered priority to debt. So once there's enough money in there, it goes into our bucket, fills up our bucket, which means that, um, they set aside enough money to pay our annual debt service for that debt payment. Once that bucket is full, then again, there's money in the room tax stabilization fund as the, um, then it goes into the next bucket and the next bucket would be, um, um, to the expo hall to pay their debt service. There are layers below that, but we haven't gotten that far. There's not been enough overflow. The, um, up until, from 2017 even until 2020, beginning of 20, um, room tax was really doing very well. We were having a large percent of increase, so the stabilization fund was growing. Um, as you know, 2020, um, everything kind of stopped dead and that is what's creating the shortfall, um, to have us not have additional waterfall, um, add monies that are falling into, to fill these separate, different buckets.
Alder Galvin, is that sufficient? Do you have any questions?
I just want to make sure. So bucket number one is KI one and the RESH Center.
Yes.
Bucket number two is a reserve fund of 2.2 and 2.8 million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the only people that control that reserve fund is the county, is that correct?
Yes.
And if that reserve fund is tapped, it has to be refilled?
Yes, it would be if they, as they did have to tap it to hit the, um, to pay the KI Convention Center one and RESH Center for the six-one payment, they did have to tap some of the reserve. There wasn't enough money that had fallen in, um, to fill up those buckets to make the payment. So they did have to tap the room tax stabilization fund and that ended up dipping below the, uh, $5 million of reserves. Correct. The county has control of those, um, reserves.
And, and how much did the county have to tap to, uh, make their June one payment?
I, I don't actually know. I do not know the answer.
Okay. And then the next bucket you said was, was KI two?
Yes.
Of which the city of Green Bay is solely responsible for?
The city is, uh, responsible for the debt, correct. Um, as long as there's enough money in the room tax stabilization fund and the waterfalls, then that, all those payments would be made in full, um, through the room tax. Otherwise, the city is responsible for that debt, correct.
Okay. And that $500,000, um, that was set aside, is that the city's money to use at its discretion or could the county also use that if they wish to?
Um, in the 2017, um, documents that were signed by, by all the members in the county, the, everyone in the room tax commission, including the, um, the city, um, that $500,000 was actually Brown County money, expo, excess stadium district money that they set aside to create a reserve in case there was ever a shortfall for the KI convention expansion. That is, was county money. Um, in the agreement, it says if there is considered a, um, a deficit or a shortfall, the city would be able to use that money. So we have gotten to the point where we were able to use, use that money. Um, the county had to give us permission to use it, but, um, in the agreement, it said if there's a shortfall, um, that we would be, I guess it's interpretation, but yes, we were able to use it because there was a shortfall.
Okay. And then, did you say there was, the expo hall is bucket number four?
Um, it, it is farther down on the, on the waterfall. I'm not actually exactly sure if it's bucket four, but yeah, there's quite a few steps and then eventually it'll go to the expo. After that, CVB could get more money, then the municipalities could get more money. So it just keeps going down. There are several different waterfalls that are on file with the agreements that we signed back in 17, um, but they are after the KI two.
All right. And if we use the $500,000 reserve, do we have to fill that? Do we have to pay that back?
Um, we do not have to pay, pay that back. That was a one-time, um, use of money, so that money is now gone. There is no other additional reserve if there is another shortfall in the room tax stabilization fund.
All right. But if the county was to give us some monies from the 2.2 or 2.8 reserve fund, we would have to pay that back through room tax money or out of our own funds?
Um, those were some discussions that we were having. Um, we were trying to, um, come up with a, I mean, something that we could agree on and that is not something we came up, we did not come, um, make a final decision on that. That is something I believe that we're still in negotiation.
Okay. And when, when were we told that there wouldn't be enough money in the fund for us to make our June one payment?
Um, I don't have an exact date. Um, we talked, there was some discussion at Room Tax Commission back in fall, then in, in, and in February, and there was no discussion, there was a shortfall. April, there was no discussion of a shortfall. Um, February, I did have some discussions with the finance director at Brown County and their financial advisor in February. And at that point, um, they believe, we believed that they thought there would be enough for the six-one payment and that we would have a concern for the 12-one payment. Um, the very end of April or very beginning of May is when we were brought, it was brought to your attention that, um, we, um, the county would probably not, would not be honoring our requi, we have to, have to turn a requisition in and they would not be honoring our requisition to pay our six-one payment.
And I'm sorry, when, when was that, 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 we found that out?
I think there, there was a phone call at the end of April, but I think the first emails were going back and forth, I think, May 5th, but early May.
May 5th. All right. And, and have they notified us about our December one payment?
I'm sorry?
Has there been any notification about our next payment this coming December 1st?
Um, at this point, there has been really no discussion, um, about the December payment. Um, you know, we would assume by then we'll have about four, four to five more months worth of room tax that will have come in and, and then, um, that, then I guess the decision will be whether or not, if there is enough or not enough, um, whether or not we will get the money to pay our December 1st payment. Um, typically about two to, usually about two months before the payment is due, I will submit a requisition and then I will get, um, approval whether or not they're going to pay it. But at this point, we have not discussed the 12-one payment.
Okay. Um, thank you. You've been very informational. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf and then Alder Johnson.
Thank you. Um, again, Director Ellenbecker, so I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. My understanding was that the county has the money in the fund that they could have chosen to use that money to help us pay for this obligation that was agreed on and that the reason that they didn't was because they wanted to make sure they had enough money for their December payment? Or am I not understanding this correctly?
Um, that is, that is our understanding, um, correct. Um, when they consider a bond year, a bond year is considered the June 1st and the December payment. Um, and in the document, it does say KI one and the RESH Center are considered priority one. So, um, when we were looking at projections, we knew there'd be enough money for our, um, the six-one payment for the KI two, um, as you went through the waterfalls, um, not interpreting the documents the same way as, um, that they would be holding on to both the six-one and the 12-one payment for the priority one, which now doesn't leave, leave enough money for priority two, six-one payment.
Is that, I, I get so confused by that since the money is there and they've made this choice to not honor this agreement with the city knowingly and also knowing that, um, things are really picking up in the economy now and Packer games are back on, there's going to be a lot of people using the hotels, the room tax will most likely be going up. Uh, there, that should be some assurance, but, but that's where we are right now. That's where it stands. The county did not follow through even though the money was there and chose to keep that money for their December payment. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director, uh, Director, where'd she go? Director Ellenbecker, if you, we talked about that contingency amount. Um, my understanding is that contingency account was created with county, county funds. Is that correct?
Just want to verify, you're talking the $500,000?
Correct.
Yes, that, that is, that was Brown County's excess of stadium district money that they set aside and if for some reason be by 2024, three, if we had not, I'm sorry, 2043, if we had not used it, it would revert back to the county. It was county money, correct. But in the document that was signed, that money would be, the city would be able to use it if needed.
Okay. And so, so I presume then because it is county money, that's why we need their approval to actually use it? Correct?
The document just said if there's a shortfall, the city shall use it. Um, through, we ended up signing an agreement later last week to allow us to use that $500,000 with the county.
Okay. And, and that was the next question, is that, that agreement is done then?
The agreement is done and it is, um, it was signed and I did add it to your, the council packet. Um, it's on page, oops, I can't find my note, but it has, it was added to the finance packet.
Okay. At any point in your...
I can find that.
And at any point in your conversations or, or within the agreement, uh, was there any discussion about the requirement for the city to repay that $500,000 to replenish that fund?
There were some discussions.
This is, I can, I can provide assistance on these questions. So as far as the, the agreement, um, goes, we really restructured it so it's more, it was actually more of a paper trail than an actual agreement because the, the existing agreements from 2017 are abundantly clear that the city is entitled to use those funds whenever there's a deficit in the existing accounts so that we were able to make our payment. And so the only reason we ultimately ended up signing something was so that both parties had a paper trail given the short timeframe within which we were operating. The county requested it, um, because under the agreement, they're allowed to do, to have 45 days to review it before they have to, to issue the funds. And so they, they stated that that's the reason they wanted the paper trail. So the agreement itself, um, really isn't necessarily the great that we're used to looking at. It really said, here's what it says in the documents and the county is agreeing to release the funds as stated in the document.
So Attorney Chavez, do you, and, and I know I'm catching off guard with this question, but does the original agreement, um, provide any language that indicates or suggests that amounts must be replenished if the, uh, contingency fund is utilized?
For the KI two expansion reserve, there is nothing on there to replenish that fund. There's also nothing that's addressed as far as using any of the KI one slash RESH Center, the priority one funds. There's nothing that, that it wasn't contemplated, I guess, um, as part of the original structure of the deal.
Okay. And, and currently right now, uh, city is responsible for KI two, but, but is the county responsible for KI one?
Yes. So the, the county is the backer for both of KI one and the RESH Center. And then the, the city took on KI two. Um, and so, yes, we are the backer of our, our, well, I should say, the county is the one who backed all of the doc, all of the, of the bonds that have been issued, with the exception of KI two.
And, and do you know, um, offhand, I mean, the county obviously took, took on... And do you know offhand, I mean, the county obviously took, took on, I guess, ownership of that, that KI 1, were there any concessions made on the part of the city that would make them do that? Is it just part of the overall agreement?
I wouldn't be able to speak to that because it was so long ago.
That's okay.
It's just that they had, there were, the way it was structured at the time is how it happened. And then when KI 2 came along, it was, I don't know if it was out of the ordinary or something, but either way, that one wasn't, it didn't follow the same trajectory.
Okay. And then, and Director Ellen Becker, you touched on this, but I just wanted to call it out more, more specifically. You had mentioned, you know, the expiration of the KI 2 being in 2043, and I think the significance of that for this body is recognizing that if we use that contingency fund, that means we are going without a contingency fund until 2043. So if, you know, any other type of financial crisis were to occur again, we are without a contingency fund. But when you're looking at something more imminent, and Alder Dorf had touched on this, and that is the potential for us to come up with funding for a December K1-2 payment, and that amount, Director Ellen Becker and I spoke earlier today, she confirmed that amount will be $728,000. And unlike K1, or excuse me, unlike the June payment, we don't have a contingency fund or other accounts to tap into for that. So that's the real risk, I think, for us as a body, because even though hotel occupancy rates are rebounding, they're not there yet, and I think it's really hard, at this point, of course, to predict where they'll be. And so I think that December, and this is part of what the closed session discussion, I think, will revolve around, is that conversation with the county, what does that look like to make sure that the city, you know, can really have their arms wrapped around what happens if? And if is an important word, but what happens if this same conversation has to occur in December? Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments before we go to closed? Alder Galvin for a second time.
Thank you. Director Ellen Becker, the reserve fund of 2.2 and 2.8 million dollars, where does that money come from? How did they fill that particular bucket?
I'm looking at the flow charts, because I, again, these were, the $2.8 million was set up back in 2000, I mean, 1999 or 2000, when the, when they set up the original flow for the KI Convention Center 1 and the Resh Center. Those were, that 2.8 million was filled up by excess room tax stabilization fund. I do believe, based on looking at the waterfall, the $2.2 million was set aside, was established by the county, and that is county money as a backup and a reserve for their, for the Expo Hall.
Okay. And how long does that money have to be maintained? Until 2043, or is there a different expiration date for that?
I am looking at a flow chart that goes past 2043, and that $5 million is still in the, still in the flow chart, so it remains in, in, in the waterfall.
Until all the debts are satisfied for K1, Resh Center, Expo Hall, everything?
Expo Hall ends in 2050 or 2052.
Okay. And the room tax money that is collected, and that's collected by the county, is that correct?
It is not collected by the county. It is collected through the Room Tax Commission. All funds are, every hotel submits their money directly to a trust account at Associated Bank under the Room Tax Commission name. At that point, the trust separates the funds that come in, and there's 10% that comes in from all the hotels, 2% immediately goes on to the CVB, and then there's 8% that's brought in for room tax. All the municipalities either get their 4% or their 16% of the 8%, and the trust then divvies that money up to their municipalities, they'll make a transfer at the end of that month, and then the remaining money all goes into the Room Tax Stabilization Fund, and that starts at the waterfall. Again, make sure, once they, that continues to accumulate and then goes to the waterfall.
And who runs the Room Tax Commission? Who's that run by?
Guys, I don't know off the top of my head. There are, there were several representatives from each municipality. I'd have to pull a document. There's probably about 12 board members, I think we have three that represent the City of Green Bay, Schwab and I probably have three, there's somebody from Howard. Currently, the president is Jason Hager, who happens to be from Tundra Lodge. There's somebody from the Housing Association on there, but I think, I'm guessing, there's about 12 people on there, but I could, I could look that up for you.
And would the Room Tax Commission be the people that would know if there's going to be or not going to be enough money in the buckets for any of these payments to be made?
They would only have that information based on projections that they received from the trustee at Associated Bank.
Okay. So, but they're the ones that would know. I mean, if anyone's going to know, it's going to be them, correct? Or is it the trustee at Associated Bank that's going to know if there's going to be enough money to make these payments?
He would know enough, and he attended the November and the January Room Tax Commission and gave a projection on where he thought the money was going to be.
And, and at that time, was there any concern?
No, actually, when we discussed it in November and in February, there was not any concern at that point about the June 1st payment. In April, when they had the Room Tax Commission meeting, it really wasn't even discussed because they didn't think there was a concern that there would not be enough to cover the KI Convention Expansion 6-1 payment.
So sometime after that April meeting, the county government, I'm not sure exactly who, became concerned that they would not be able to make their December payment? And at that time, that's when they decided to hang on to the money that we thought or assumed we would have available to us for this June 1st payment. Is that your understanding?
I think that's, I believe that's what happened, correct.
All right. And when the county says they're tapping into the two-point, into the reserve fund, the $5 million reserve fund, what are they tapping into it for?
Again, I don't have all the numbers. Again, the county and their, but they would have to tap it into, they would have to tap it to, there was not enough money from, as they, after they make their payments, and after a bond year, then they have to start filling up the buckets again to make sure that they have enough to pay for the KI Convention Expansion, KI 1 and the Resh Center for the next year's payments. So at the beginning of a new bond year, they have to start what they would call, fill up the buckets, make sure there's enough money in there to pay their debt service. And because there wasn't enough to make their debt service for this next year because of 2020 COVID year, they had to tap back, they had to tap back into things that had fallen into the Room Tax Stabilization Fund. Now they had to pull some back, because there wasn't enough to make the payments for KI 1 and for the Resh Center, and for this new bond year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions?
It looks like Vanderleest, Alder Vanderleest would like to speak.
Yep. Alder Vanderleest.
I think we want to thank the county for the diligence that they have, the reserve funds that, that we're able to use. And I think if you look at, you know, 2020 as far as the room tax, throughout the whole state of Wisconsin, it was, it was pretty flat right across the board as far as this type of tax collection. So I think that, you know, moving forward, we're going to be in much better condition. I think the money will come in. If we happen to be a little short, that we can't make it, we'll have to figure out how we're going to make the money, make the payment in December. But let's hope that we have a good, from now until December, when it's due, that we'll, you know, do well on the room tax and that we'll be able to, to make our payments. And I think that overall, you know, we're fortunate that we have the $500,000 that we can fall back on, and that's why it was set up. And nobody predicted this type of year that we've had this last year in 2020. There's numerous businesses that have shut right down. They're done. And, you know, we're fortunate that we can move forward, and we're hoping that, you know, it's going to be a plus when it comes to December. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And whether it's Director Ellen Becker or Attorney Chavez who answers this, I'm not sure, but is there anyone else in that waterfall that's being impacted by the, the room tax shortfall?
At this point, I'm going to say it's really, we're impacted in June 1st here of 2021. Because there's not enough money, there's nothing falling lower into the waterfall, but nobody is negatively impacted at this moment. Nobody has to come up with money to make a payment, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Again, less money falling in, that's less money that's going to be used for, for future, I guess, steps within the waterfall.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And to me, at the heart of this conversation, we've found a way to obviously make the payment now. It's trying to prepare ourselves for what could happen in December. And so if there is a shortfall in December, what are the ways that you would anticipate that we would cover that shortfall? I mean, based on our conversation at Finance, it was my understanding levy dollars, if that's the case, would that be 2021 levy dollars? Or could we borrow from Wisconsin Trust Fund? Are there other ways to make that payment?
We, there would be no, nothing has been set aside in the 2021 budget for this payment. So it couldn't be, I don't think it would be 2021 levy dollars. I mean, unless you would pull from some kind of contingency of a fund or from a fund of balance. We haven't, we did not budget for a shortfall in 2021.
Right. And I think that's my concern. The payment comes due, and we have to pay or default on a bond, we're obviously going to pay. Where, where is that money going to come from?
There is one additional reserve fund that is set aside. When you, when you set up the initial loan, it's called a debt reserve fund, and it's set aside to make your very last payment. So the money that I need for the 2043 debt service payment is in another fund at, at the Associated Bank in the trust, set aside for our very last debt payment. According to our financial advisor, that is a very last place you're going to want to tap, but that is a possibility that would cover our December payment if needed. That we would have to fill back up. But again, that would be the city using their money. So, you know, again, the hope, hopefully the money will start filling into the Room Tax Stabilization Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Motion has been made to go into closed session.
Somebody read the language?
Pursuant to Sections 19.85, 1E Wisconsin statutes, for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the sale of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, if not, as necessary for competitive or bargaining reasons, the committee will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 1985.2, I'm sorry, 19.85 Sub 2 Wisconsin statutes, take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Alder. We will use the board.
Alders, you may vote. Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous to move into closed session, so we will do that.
Second.
Now it's not. I move to go back into open session.
We have a motion by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell, to return to open session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Could we have everyone mute?
I am muted.
I think we, oh.
Mayor, do we need a motion?
That might have been me. All right. So we are back in open session. I'll entertain a motion on the closed session business.
I move that we proceed as discussed in closed session.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens, to proceed as directed in closed session. Any discussion? Alder Johnson?
I believe, Mayor, that we are also going to need, I don't know if you want to handle this separately as part of the same motion, but we also need to ratify use of the KI 2 reserve fund to pay the June 2021, 2013 RDA K1-2 bond payment.
Well, and actually, it's a good point. I think the motion as it stands incorporates kind of both elements, where it says authorize staff to use reserve fund, continue negotiations with the county as directed. I think that as directed covers what was discussed. So with that, we have a motion and a second further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Onto ordinances first and-
Recording in progress.
Number three.
Ordinances first and final reading for adoption.
No.
Mayor, you have item number three that was pulled under the Finance report.
Oh, my apologies. I thought you were talking about the ordinance. All right. Item three, motion made by Alder Scanell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Dorf. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to explain to the Alders, am I, am I doing feedback here? No, okay. Just to explain to the Alders that we're not at Finance. We had a very robust discussion about the capital improvement plan. We came up with enough to take away from the bonding so that we would get to our $7.5 million goal, and that we did that by holding the $2 million for the Main Street Bridge repairs and the $1.1 million for City Hall electrical repairs for a year. And so I am hoping that we can move forward and accept the CIP with the general levy bond request of approximately $7.5 million, and to approve that. If we did that tonight, by the end of the June meeting, then we would be able to do the resolution.
Thanks, Alder.
So I will make that as a motion.
I think item, item three addresses.
It is? Okay. Just making sure, because it says discussion. I want action, so, okay.
Yep. I think we do have a motion that encompasses those actions. I think your volume is on, on the computer. Any further discussion? Alder Weary and then Alder Scanell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the five-year plan is a rolling plan, right? Every, every year, we just set a new five-year plan, so something that's four years out. This year might disappear next year or move up. Okay. I, I'm fine with the bonding for this year, but I want to vote against the five-year plan. So, do we need it separated, or?
So that, we're not actually voting on the bonding yet.
Okay.
We'll have resolutions to that effect, if I'm not mistaken, but Director Ellen Becker can correct me if I'm wrong. There'll be resolutions that authorize the-
And I know we haven't had a chance to have the really in-depth conversations and debate with numbers at Improvement Services for the, you know, hoped-for improvement, increasing in roadwork, and I know it's set flat for five years. You know, personally, I think that should be going up 1, 200, 250,000 a year to get to that 3%. So that reason, I'm voting against the CIP. I'm fine with this year's bonding. It was too late to do much change this year. It's pretty tight. But record me as a no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Just a question. Just a question, is, is it comfortable, could these funds end up being replaced with some money that we may be getting, perhaps, down the road from the state or the Fed?
So on, yes, hopefully, especially on the Main Street Bridge.
Yeah.
That item was- That item was, was held over partially for that reason. I'll allow Alder Dorf, of course, to chime in, but Governor Evers put money for the Main Street Bridge in his budget. I think it was $1.3 million, so not the entirety of the cost, but a, you know, a good chunk of it. The state legislature, the Joint Finance Committee, hasn't yet gotten to the DOT budget, so that's still kind of an open, open question at this point.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to get that public.
And then the other piece of it would be the committee that was accepted tonight, Alder Johnson's idea about the ad hoc committee looking at the building. If we're going to maybe move forward with that, then we maybe don't, we may still have to do some of the health and safety measures for City Hall, but we'll put that off for one year.
Great. Thanks, Alders. Any further comments? Seeing, Alder, start.
Don't unmute. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to ask Alder Weary, you know, I kind of feel a little bit like you do on this as well, you know, I think, you know, with the, you know, with the monies that are out there with our, what is, I'm having a brain misuse here. What is the fund that we're paying into? Wheel tax, thank you very much. I was on vacation, so I'm a little tired. The wheel tax, I mean, there's money was brought up with that, and, you know, we've talked at length about improving it up to, toward 3%. And then, what are we at right now? I mean, anybody, can anybody tell you what we're at, roughly? Oh, the report, okay. And I, you know, I think, and I've listened to all the conversations that went on in Finance, and there were a lot of very good conversations. I think a lot of it is very good, but I think the one point that I have a little trouble with is with the roads, you know, that we need to tighten that up a little bit. So is that something that we, we're needing to vote on tonight on that five-year plan? I agree with the entire plan, pretty much, but the road issue is something that I have concerns with as, as well.
Sure. Yeah, appreciate that. I mean, and obviously don't want to get into a running discussion, but in terms of the, you know, the percentage that are being replaced, increasing that to 3%, that's, it's a dramatic jump. We've increased, depending upon the metric that you use, 30 to 40% in the last couple of years in comparison to the 10-year average. And I think Director Gneer has been pretty clear in saying, we're at the point where we can sustain that increase, but to go above it, we're going to have to find additional revenue sources somewhere else. So that's kind of the box that we're in at this point, but certainly I'd love to see more roads reconstructed and resurfaced as well.
And your estimation, though, do you feel that the citizens are fairly satisfied with some of this? I mean, the comments you may be getting from the public in general that we're, we're on board with this? I mean, what's your take on that?
You know, I haven't received any recent feedback on the CIP, per se, over the last year. You know, I think people are maybe focused on some other things, but we've definitely seen a decrease in people talking about need for road repair. And I think part of that is credit to our DPW staff and all the maintenance that's been done. I think that's really, you know, been improved in recent years, especially with the increased use of mastic, you know, rather than some of the dry mix or hot mix or what have, or cold mix or hot mix, or what have you. So, you know, I think people want to be able to drive on a relatively smooth road. I don't think they necessarily care if it's been reconstructed or, or resurfaced. I think that's the primary, you know...
Right. But like I said, a couple of years, you know, years or a year and a half ago, I went through the PESR report, and I did a lot of work on that, looking at it and trying to give it some information to the Alders about the road conditions. It's something I probably shouldn't have had to do, but I did it because I think it was really important. And I just don't feel that, you know, you can get lip service on some of this stuff, too, but I think it's very important that we're transparent here, and we need to have a map or a report or something out there that says, okay, this is what we're doing. We need to see it because the citizens ask us, and we need to see it.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that's a really good point. Director Ronik has worked on that with his team, along with, of course, Director Gneer and DPW staff. So there is that, there is a map that, you know, that indicates CIP projects over the next five years, once this is authorized, you know, that could very well be, or easily made public so people can, can track both, you know, the PESR report or whatever the terminology is for, in terms of the condition of the roads, but then also, you know, what the plans are going forward. But Director Ronik?
I did, I did show a software application at the council meeting that showed the CIP and the pavement ratings, and I can show you that app and teach you how to use it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it's very helpful. All right, any, Kathu, or Alder LaFabe, rather, and then Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Okay. What about, now, the governor is holding the funds from the feds for, I thought infrastructure was part of it. And my understanding is that the governor, he can allocate, the legislature, they're all upset because they can't, you know, well, they can chime in, but the governor actually has the control where those funds are. Where does that stand? Because I believe a lot of it was infrastructure, was it not?
Well, it depends what your definition of infrastructure is. In the American Rescue Plan, you can use these dollars for sewer, water, and broadband. So roads and bridges are not something that's eligible with these federal dollars, by and large. I mean, there, there might be a few ways to, to get around that, or, especially when you're talking about City Hall, some of these upgrades maybe to our mechanical systems, especially if they impact HVAC, you know, that might be a justifiable expense, but roads and bridges, broadly speaking, not something that we can use federal, these federal dollars for. There's a lot of talk about transportation, a transportation bill or an infrastructure bill, you know, in the coming months, maybe, but the American Rescue Plan does not cover that stuff.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot that. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So the one thing I think is important is that we separate the bond discussion from the capital improvement plan, and certainly they're interrelated, but there will be an opportunity, I think, for us to talk about specifics within the bond request. You know, I'll be the first to say that I was kind of, you know, anticipating more of a discussion about the capital improvement plan tonight, looking at the schedule that we've got coming up for bonding, because there are a few things that were in the capital improvement plan that I looked at. And I'm like, I don't know if I want to bond $2,500 for software. Like, I think that should be a levy-supported expense. And so I would, personally, I'm probably going to take a little closer look at that bond request when it comes up, and certain things like that. And because I think there are a few things, like I said, that, that I would prefer to see handled in the city's annual budget. But the one thing, you know, and Alder, Alder Weary talked about, of course, he wants to oppose it because he wants to see the number go up, and I appreciate the principled position on that, and I agree with the sentiment. But I also recognize that this capital improvement plan's got to come back to us every year. And there's no way for us, really at this point, especially for roads, that require time to engineer, there's no way for us, you know, to make significant modifications for this year. And so I would anticipate that when this comes back next year, we'll have that opportunity to grow up. Because if there's one thing that I'm certain with, is that I don't want to see this body be the reason or the roadblock of why we're not doing more roads. And I think everyone at this table, tables right now could, could hopefully agree that this is the thing that's most on the mind of our taxpayers, and we need to find a way to provide enough resources to make significant changes there. So I'm not going to oppose the capital improvement plan because I do think we have plenty of opportunity for those modifications, and I do expect that we would see more funding allocated in future versions of this.
Thanks, Alder. Other thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
No, put me as a no, please.
The ayes have it, and that item has been accepted, approved, and held. Onto ordinances first and final reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
We have, well, I think we want, some might want to discuss one of these items, but I would entertain that motion for items one and two.
Motion to combine one and two.
There has been a motion to suspend the rules and take up items one and two with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scanell and seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? The ayes have it. And I believe... Motion to adopt, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Steyer. And I believe, Attorney Chavez, do we need two-thirds vote?
That is correct, because every, these are all first and final. All of these have to be done by two-thirds vote.
Okay, so just wanted to note that, but we will use the board on these two items.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Alder Johnson? Alder Johnson, how is recorded?
It's not coming up for me, but I'm a yes.
Thank you.
And those are adopted 12-0. Onto item three. Motion to adopt, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. As I noted, I think we'd like to have a little bit of a discussion here. There was some question about the expiration date of the ordinance, so I just would like to go to Attorney Chavez to explain why that was included, and then allow for some discussion among council.
So the reason that was included is because there was some question as to whether or not it should be an issue that continues permanently. The date that was proposed is end of the year so that there is an automatic expiration that kind of mirrors what's going on with the pandemic. And it gives the council an opportunity to see if things are working, if they feel like the remote attendance is making it easy for the public, for staff, and for the council to participate. The date could, I mean, it's an ordinance, so the council can always choose to sunset it or to repeal it early. They could also choose to take it up before it expires and adopt it on a permanent basis. It's really up to the council. We just add that timeframe in there to allow the council to see how it's actually operating before it's a permanent deal.
Thanks, Attorney Chavez. I know Alder Dorf and potentially Alder Burnett had some thoughts on this, so Alder Dorf?
Right, I had thought, first of all, that I, I agree that we, I would like to have this ordinance in effect. I think it would be really helpful. There was an example brought up that I'll let Alder Burnett bring up when it's his turn to speak, because it was a great example. But if, and the example I brought up was about three years ago, most of you weren't here, some of you were. I had influenza. I came with 102 fever to City Council because I felt like I had to be here. I just had to be here. Now, the pandemic, I would never do that again. Never would I, I didn't even think about it, exposing other people. I just felt like I have to go to City Council. So having the opportunity to do that from home if one was ill, you know, but you could still, you know, stay conscious and vote appropriately. Or if, you know, one was unable to be in town because they were on vacation or something, to still be able to attend. I hope that, you know, sooner than later, we can mostly be together, but I think it would be a really nice option to have for us, since we know it can work. It really can work if we need it to.
Thanks, Alder. Other thoughts on, on that question or other elements? Alder Galvin?
Just testing. And I agree with Alder Dorf. I think it makes it much easier for us to do the job that we were elected to do. And at the same time, I think even more so for the public that would have to have sat here for three hours now, potentially, on our, oh, we got rid of the old wooden benches, which were pretty uncomfortable. But this allows them to, to participate more in the governmental process than ever before. And they can do it from the comfort of their home, or even if they're on vacation or on the road somewhere, but it gives them the opportunity to, to make the comments they feel that should be made. And I think, I think that's even more important than what it does for, for the Alders. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alder Dorf made reference to something that I brought to her attention, the mayor's attention, when we spoke earlier today, and that is, there was a former council member who was called up to active duty in the Coast Guard. And I think at the time, I wasn't on the council, but I think there were some difficulties getting that person permission to participate. So there are rare circumstances where a person at home, you know, could do the job from home, including a member of our council tonight. There's a very good reason why a person is participating from home. There could be a situation where one of the council members is with a family member convalescing due to ill health or injury. So there are a lot of situations I prefer to be in person always. I love government. Believe it or not, even when these meetings run long, there's certain energy of being part of the government process in person, but I also realize we are at a time in our history where we, we have remote possibilities that the pandemic has caused us to explore. So I'm really conflicted. I don't think it does us any harm to remove the sunset on the ordinance, this time of resolution, whatever it is. I will say I'm conflicted, though. It's not an easy vote to make, but I do like the flexibility for members of our governing body, the 12 or 13 of us here, but also a year from now when we have a new council that gets sworn in. So, you know, we can always change it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Thank you. People bring up their experiences. It reminds me that I came on the day my sister died. I felt I had, came, there was, I don't remember what the vote was, but it was, I felt I had to be here for the vote, and I left in the, before the meeting was over, but I had to come for that vote. So certainly, you know, there are definitely times when I think this would be good. I don't have a problem with a sunset clause now to try it out and see, and then make a decision later. Will this be something we need to remember, or will staff be bringing this up before it expires?
We won't be relying on you to remember this.
Thank you, thank you. Because that, that, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder LaFabe, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, say let's keep, keep it till the end. No, actually, with this pandemic, we still don't have the herd immunity, the vaccinations yet. We still have ifs and ands or buts and, you know, things that we have to go through yet and realize. And we're going to go through a summer where we're going to have a lot of people who are not vaccinated. We're going to have a lot of people getting together, and we just don't know what might happen. We got another new variant coming in. Even us are vaccinated. Hopefully, you know, we're protected. And, and I'm glad I was able to do it Zoom tonight because been very stressed here lately with my husband. And right now, I'm just very, very tired. I haven't been sleeping very well. So I'm glad that I was able to, sorry, come here, Zoom.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Any final thoughts? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I probably have flipped my view of this totally around. I used to be very much in favor of, you had to be at the meeting. And then in my 19, 20 years, whatever, being on the council, I've missed, I think, twice. And both times I was sick. I had, I think, I might have strep, strep throat both times, and I certainly wasn't going to come and spread that around to everybody. And those are the only times I've missed. Now, if I had this option, I would have, wouldn't have missed any meetings. So I, you know, there's a lot of options now with technology that I think this is a good thing. Thanks.
Great. Are we going to leave the expiration date for now, or? Right, I didn't, I didn't hear Attorney Chavez offer a strong legal argument for keeping the expiration date in. Attorney Chavez, is that correct?
It's entirely at the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to move that we...
Oh, sorry, Alder Dorf, go ahead.
I would like to move that we eliminate, now, the clause number four.
An amendment?
And amend it with that elimination.
Alder Dorf makes an amendment to remove the expiration date from the ordinance, it was seconded by Alder Scannell, Alder Stevens?
Attorney, sorry, attorney, so when we were at the committee level, there was discussion regarding keeping the clause in, and there was a reason why to keep the clause in, can you please explain that to the council?
If my recollection is correct, it's because there was concern that, that the members of the council and their committees would be attending from far away, from, from a distance, rather than from within the city, and so, we were tasked with determining whether or not there was something we should do to prevent that from being abused, and second, whether or not there was anything that would prevent the members by law from, from carrying out their duties when they are no longer in the city, we have not found anything to date which would prohibit the, anybody who's, who carries an office from fulfilling their office once they are out of, out of state or out of the city, so, with that, I, I don't see any issue with, with it from that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Attorney Chavez, thanks Alder, any other discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Alder LeFave?
Can you explain to me, I'm sorry, here I am, why we want to take the...
So Alder Dorf is offering an amendment to remove the expiration date on the ordinance, so this would allow for the indefinite remote attendance of council meetings.
Okay, okay, thank you, sorry.
Nope, no problem. All in favor of that amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, and that amendment...
Second.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to adopt as amended, that was seconded by Alder Dorf, and we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote.
It's not coming up. Coming up, I'm a yes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance is adopted 11 to 1, onto resolutions, second, Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote, that was seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Alder Scannell makes a motion to adopt the resolution, seconded by Alder Galvin, any discussion? We will use the board. Alder Vanderlees wishes to be noted as voting no on item number three.
Thank you. Only on item three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Steyer is a yes.
And then I also, Alder Steyer and Alder Johnson, I did not hear.
Johnson is a yes.
Thank you, and Alder Steyer?
For Steyer.
Okay, and then, so, I'm showing this Alder Vanderlees as, sorry, show the screen, so I'm showing Alder Vanderlees as a yes, but Alder Vanderlees, I will fix your vote for number three as a no.
All right, thank you Clerk Jeffries, on to ordinance's first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote, that was seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Aye.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and these items have been advanced to a final reading, petitions and communications. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have one for Improvement and Services Committee, request a 20-year history of road repairs, including alleys, sort by total expenditure miles completed in type, reconstruct and resurface, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any others? Alder Burnett?
Yes, Improvement and Services for discussion with possible action on granting easements to AT&amp;T and other public utilities for installment and infrastructure work in the public right-of-way, specifically but not entirely in the area of Parkwood, Fawn, and Packerland.
Thank you, thanks Alder, any others? Motion to refer?
Motion to refer.
Motion has been made to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authority, that was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, those have been referred.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, we're adjourned, thanks everybody.